Thank you.
What was yours? I think it's off of your hand.
I think in previous conversations, we've talked about, we have a number of services that we historically just renewed or brought to you with short notice where as a commission, not necessarily this commission, a renewal will be impending and we may not have had enough time to pivot if we wanted to. So you may recall, James Charlesworth gave a presentation as related to our general liability insurance and renewal assurance as our broker. And the intention was to give you an education on that and give you an option of whether you want to go to market or what you wanted to do. This is Bob Charlesworth. So he helps us with our health insurance and we're kind of at that same point. We're trying to be strategic in terms of giving you an overview of how we attack health insurance as an organization, what to have. Bob's the expert in terms of what the market looks like and how to take advantage of that. And then at the end of this conversation, we'll talk about options going forward and how you want to proceed. But I have had a chance to review his PowerPoint and there's a lot of technical acronyms in there that I'm confident he's going to walk us through. So I'll turn it over to Natalie and Bob.
Okay, I'm in. If you want me to stand or how you want me to.
If you could be where that camera can see at least everyone's. Yeah, take one of these chairs. You can make like a fireside chat.
It works with me. Works with me, a lot of moving parts. Thank you again. My name is Bob Charlesworth. I'm Vice President of Charles consulting, very creative name. This is my 35th year. James, you met earlier, is my younger brother by many years. That's why he's the President and I'm the Vice President. There's a future with him. But what I want to talk about today is kind of the working parts of group benefits. So it's a lot of moving parts. Ran this by Natalie. It's again, there's lots of some acronyms in there, but I kind of just want to walk you through where the city is and what's going on as we see it. This is a little summary of our firm. James, again, you've met James, he's my younger brother. Connie does some specific stuff with segregation. She does some segregation for a lot of our cities. Peter is a new hire. Peter was an Assistant City Attorney for a city in Kansas. We hired him in January and Haley just joined us a few months ago and she kind of corrals us and keeps us in play. But we're office in downtown Kansas City now. So I take the 30 minute, 30 mile trek every morning. It takes me an hour each way. So I'd like to be in Salina. A little bit of understanding, what we're going to talk about today a little bit is fully insured versus self insured. And the city is what we consider self insured. Your claims are your claims. When you transfer a risk like fully insured programs, you're taking your dollars and transferring into care to protect that financial risk, good or bad. Obviously, the larger you are, the more predictable you are, doesn't make you the cheaper one. I've got groups in Missouri that are 60,000 people, doesn't make it cheaper. They just make it more predictable. It's more actually looking for. But for years, the city has taken their risk assumption philosophy that we're going to handle our own claims, we're the size, where our claims are us, it looks like us. But we're going to purchase some protection for the worst case scenario. So today, we're funding the program and we're going to talk about 2020, how it works. We're going to talk a little bit about employee contributions and how that plays into it, defined contributions. That was a big buzzword several years ago. Some wellness activities, that's a big deal now, participation versus outcomes base. As my dad would say, now comes base, gone done to meddling with people, but it's important to talk about. Community based plans are a big buzzword today. We'll talk about some of how that works. Associational trusts and pools are available for public entities especially. And then we're going to talk about some marketing direction. And kind of read out what Mike was talking about, we've already got a city renewal in a minute. I don't want to preempt it too quickly, but there's time to do something if you want to do something. So we're not pinched today or anything like that. So and it's pretty solid, but at least we should know, we don't wait till the last minute to get everything.
And I'm sorry.
Yes.
What is PPACA?
Okay.
I just.
Yeah, the, that's PACA, that's the Patients, that's the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
Special Protection Affordable Care Act. And there are fees and I'll touch on that real quick on the full insurance. It's actually on the next slide. On PACA fees, what this is, is that when you're fully insured, you pay that full amount and that varies every year. And for 2020, that's estimated to be 2.4%. It varies. And that's on the fully insured premium. So if you have a million dollar premium, you're going to pay $24,000 in taxes. Now, if you're self funded, that only applies to.
The who is the entity?
The entity is built into the rates. The insurer has to build that into the rates. For 2019, as we sit here, the federal government said zero. It was wonderful. So we're getting all of our renewals for one one and if they're fully insured, you automatically saw a 2.4% rate decrease just because of taxes. Even if you were good, you would see that impact. The year before that was 3.4%. So obviously it can vary and this is a federal government tax, which helps fund the Affordable Care Act, the insurance exchanges. So what we're, and of course insurers, they take all the risk if you transfer that risk to them. Again, it's a risk assumption, risk transfer. They take all the claims, all the appeals, all the fiduciary responsibility. When you self fund, it kind of comes back a little bit onto the city. Again, on the PACA fees, it's only on the stop loss and administration fees. So that 2.4% is going to impact about 15% of your overall cost, much less impact. And then the PCOR, which is the Patient Center, I'm going to get it all wrong. It's a research fee that continues and it's supposed to continue, I think, for two more years. It's about $2.75 per member per year, not per employee, per member on your plan. But what I want to touch on is TPA versus insurer. This is important. The city has an agreement with Blue Cross of Kansas. The Blues are interesting to work with in Kansas, good people. They're very large, they insure probably 80% of all the businesses in central Kansas. But what the city has done, the city says, I tell you what, we want to borrow your provider network, we want to use your stop loss provisions, and we'll talk about stop laws, and we want you to administer our claim, our claims. And it looks like fully insured, but you're not. You get claims every week to pay. But we also provide protections on that. We being Blue Cross, the city purchased it from them. So anything under $150,000 per individual per year is the city's responsibility. Anything over $150,000 is Blue Cross's responsibility. We've transferred that risk to them for a premium. And then we have a worst case scenario called aggregate stop loss. The worst case scenario, what is the worst case? We have a number, we know what the worst case is, we've not hit it. So we're in good shape there. But it's there for, it's very inexpensive, but it's really good just to have for budgeting purposes for worst case. But what you get into when you start self funding, it's, the changes are a little bit more cumbersome to make changes. You can do it. It's not like you have to be married with Blue Cross of Kansas. But in a minute, we're going to talk about a lag report because remember, when you go on today for your services, when do you get your bill? It's going to be a few more weeks down the road. You'll get that explanation of benefits, after the provider discounts it, and then you'll have to apply or deduct copay or whatever to it. So it takes a while to get that generated. Now, the beautiful part about this, in a minute, I've talked about the lag report, the electronic filing from providers has gotten much more common. So that period, that lag period from when it was services rendered, when paid, has shortened quite a bit over the years, which helps in reserve funding discussions. Stop loss, again, we've talked about that on an individual basis. They call it specific or individual stop loss and aggregate, which is the most in a policy period. And then we're going to talk about some of the technicalities of it, incurred versus paid reimbursement methods. And reimbursement method is probably the most important method. With carrier based programs, and I'll pick on Cigna, I'll pick on Aetna, I'll pick on Blue Cross. When you typically buy a stop loss program from the insurance carrier, when you hit that $150,000 per individual in one given year, they take it from that point forward. If you carve that out, there are separate insurers that will do that. Sun Life is one, Gerber Life, you know, the baby people, they have an insurance program. What happens is you pay anything above that and then they send you a check back. It's a reimbursement model. I don't like that because some of these claims can get big. And so therefore, I prefer carrier based model. Doesn't mean you can't, but also carrier based models typically what they do, they call those, they call them pooled rated, they pool all their stuff together. So your claims don't directly impact you all the time, where if you carve that out to a stop loss carrier, your rates could vary every year based on who's sick. So sometimes it's, you pay a little bit more carrier based than you will carving it out. Why? Because there's a benefit, plus or minus, to that. Provider networks, a big deal right now is called narrow networks, trying to narrow the utilization down. You may remember years ago, called the Health Maintenance Organizations, HMOs, where there's affordable care organizations, ACOs that have been developed, accountable care organizations, excuse me, which are trying to narrow network those people down. And of course, there's losers and losers in all provider network discounts. Sometimes a physician gets narrowed down their reimbursement model. So you have to find out where that sweet house is and what's realistic and what's not. Last I checked, providers just getting Medicare's payment, not staying business very long. They have to have some other income to be able to afford all, keeping their doors open. RX rebates, we're going to talk about that real quickly. RX is probably, that's why I said good, bad, and ugly. It's a shell game almost, it's really difficult to understand how it all works. The city is with MedTrack, it's a pharmacy benefit manager, it's carved out from Blue Cross. We've done that for a reason over the years. They've managed the claims extremely well. We supplement that with TRIA healthcare, which actually contacts individuals, makes sure they're in compliance with their medications. We've seen a very good return on investments on that for the city and their employees. Employees have embraced it. And then the city also gets some rebates from MedTrack. Of course, the cost of MedTrack is very little money. Why? Because they're still getting part of the rebates. So it's, where do you want it? You want all the rebates and you're going to pay more elsewhere for somebody to handle it. Of course, care and case management, those that have needs, how can we expand that to manage those?
Did you say that the city does get the Blue Cross, Blue Shield negotiated rates?
Yes, we do.
That's a big plus.
It's a big plus.
Yes.
Yeah, as the carrier models have not gotten that aggressive and then WPPA, they've changed their name now to Doctors, I'm going to get it wrong, I better not say it. Fine provider network, but the discounts aren't quite what Blue Cross of Kansas discounts This is a kind of a, I don't know what you want to call it, it's kind of a snapshot summary. Where's our money go as a city? So I wanted to kind of let you see kind of in the scheme of it all, where we're sitting at from 2-1 2019 to 1-31 of 2020, which is the city's contract year. And as you can see, all the little pieces down there, the PACA taxes, about $3,600 a year, not horrible, because some of those fees went away years, a couple of years ago. The individual and aggregate stop loss, remember stopping at 150 and aggregate at 130%, the city pays about $600,000 for that currently. It's not cheap. Claims administration, about $211,000 a year for Blue Cross to manage all your claims and about $4,000 for MedTrack to manage your pharmacy clients. So collectively, in the green, it's about 10.9% of your overall spend is spent on fixed costs, things we know we're going to pay out. Somebody to handle it, somebody to help enroll it, somebody to manage claims and pay the claims and provide a stop loss protection. Above that, we have MedTrack, which with TRIA management, we put that in there. It's about a million and a half dollars a year in claims, about 20% of the overall spend, that is about right. I find in higher education and K through 12, that spends about 25%. So that is the wild card right now, a little bit, the pharmacy cost. But the city is running about 20% of your overall costs as in pharmacy costs. And then you can see the medical claims, it's had caps at $150,000 for any one individual. And the city is right on track to be right at $3.9 million this year. And you're almost like clockwork. You're right on track. If you took the claims that Natalie provides me every month and the report I get from Blue Cross of Kansas every month, if you annualize it, you're right on track. And don't be surprised, we have, claims are up and down, but we've also got 503 employees plus families that help spread that risk. The important piece also to see is that the reserve fund, when Natalie and I visit every year, you know, a lot of people don't have reserve funds for the, manage those years that go up and down, because you can almost bank on it, every four years, you're going to have a rough year. Just write it down, you're going to have it. So there's that corridor and that's why we want you to have some reserve dollars and the city has done a really nice job in reserve dollars. So that would take care of any fluctuation during the year as well as if you ever decide to leave Blue Cross, you still are responsible for those claims that were when you were at Blue Cross. Somebody new would start and it would be immature, it started zero. So you just need to keep those dollars available. So that's what it looks like as we sit today. Now, this is.
Question?
Yes.
503 employees, aren't we, is that the retired employees?
That's enrolled in the plan. That would include everybody.
And in terms of the reserve fund, you're showing like basically almost 1.2 million. Is that where you'd like to see it?
That's where I think the minimum should be.
Okay. And because we had decided like not to fund it this year, right? And we're at what this year?
We talked about 1.5. Being new. We funded it. We identified that we were in excess of our target reserve balance.
Right.
So we stopped making those payments through the end of the calendar year. So the reserve balance will stay where it was and which is in excess of our target and then we'll pick back up.
And then we'll decide next year, we'll look at it again towards the end of the year, I would anticipate.
And what was our target, 1.5, 2?
So 1.5, it's about 1.5.
Yeah.
This is the.
My conversation bumped that up slightly because.
I thought we bumped it to two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think we personally, I think we, 1.5 is what you suggested, but I think we bumped it to two.
That's fine.
Okay.
Again, this is, this is just one year. You know, so if you have a bad year, you could whack that away pretty quickly. So I have no problem with where they're at. But I always get that question, how much do we have in there?
Right.
Well, I'll tell you. But here's, I've already gotten your renewals, I just got them last week. Now, I don't think Natalie's even seen them, because my job is to go back and have a discussion with Blue Cross when I see their information. And you'll notice a couple of things, I'm going to go back and forth real quick here, it's on your slide, but if you look at the stop loss, it's $595,000 this period at renewal, Excellent. Your experience is good and Blue Cross collectively has done well. Your fixed fees have stayed almost flat, as have the other taxes. Again, you can see the overall cost at 9.11% versus the 10.9, that was earlier. So your fixed fees have come down. Excellent news. The expected medical claims have gone up slightly. I actually increased both 8% based on my Ouija board. And let me tell you how my Ouija board works. I carve out both medical and pharmacy as just like we have here. And when I take the city's specific claims and I look at where people are going and what the discounts look like, and it's been very, very, I won't say simplistic, but it's been very, I won't say even predictable, but it's fairly consistent. So I got a great comfort level with that. What we're seeing right now is in the medical cost, about 4%, 4.5% medical trend cost increases every year, which is pretty good. That is utilization as well as cost of service going up. Pharmacy is the wild card, it's between 9 and 11. Depends on specialty drugs, et cetera. So that's, that's the concern. So just for ease of understanding, the funding level that I've come up with is just my, my number. If you took 20% of your cost, being the pharmacy and you took 80% of medical at 4.5 or, it's probably closer to seven. I used 8% just for discussion purposes. So as you can see, you can kind of see where the funding is going forward. But to me, at this point, where we're talking, where my challenge has been with Blue Cross, and they give us expected claim numbers and that's where those numbers come from as well. To me, my heavy negotiating items are really in the fixed cost area, because the claims are your claims. I can't do a whole lot about that, but I can have an impact on your fixed cost. And so I'm really happy with the renewal looks like so far this year.
So where do we lose the 12 employees at?
You've read my mind.
Well, these are just employees who've chosen to.
That is correct.
Sign up for, I mean, like if their spouse has coverage, they may not need ours.
It's a snapshot in time. This time last year was 503, this month it was 491.
Our employment levels fluctuate that much month to month, depending on departmental activities.
And I'll just add with, sometimes even, because the retirees, would they include in there? They age off, they could, when 65 and no longer be eligible for the coverage, so it's, yeah, like Mike said, it fluctuates month to month.
Wasn't sure what age off was going to refer to, but I like the choice he chose.
They have a term. Yeah, when I see that, I'm going, I don't know what that means. But yeah, that, obviously they're active, they'll work and they can be able to age 65, that's not an issue, but once they retire, it does terminate at the age 65, Medicare This is really, this is going to be too much for you right now, but I just kind of want to show you that, say, well, just give us some stop loss protection. My response is, what kind of stop loss you want? And you're going to go, oh my gosh, I can't believe you just did that. Well, if you look at this, under the 12-12 contract, think of it in the blue line as incurred and paid, it's incurred in 12 and paid in 12. It's a short period of time. Services have to be rendered and then paid within that contract period. So what's that mean? Well, it's going to be cheap. Because it's not going to take any of what we call running claims at 24-12. Anything that happened 12 months before but not paid until after the contract, it's covered. If I was on the 12-12, if service was rendered in January, it did not account to next year's contract. Obviously, it's going to be cheaper that way. So obviously, there's all kinds of plans to look at as we do here. Blue Cross is on an incurred basis, so whenever the service is rendered, it doesn't matter when it's paid, it goes to that stop loss contract. So that's probably one of the more expensive ones to get. However, if you ever change, it's a great contract to have, because that way, if you have somebody that happens to go in for a hard issue in December and doesn't get paid to March, April, or whatever, fine, it still goes against that $150,000 stop loss of which services are rendered. So those are usually the, you pay a little bit more for that, a little bit of premium for that, but it's really good. We have a lot of contracts that are just paid. Just whenever I pay and write a check, I want it to go against my clients. That's fine until you want to change. You don't have to worry about that extended, that terminal period, that lag period, if you will. Here's what a lag report looks like. Again, I'm all about charts and fun stuff. What I've done here is just so you can see the life of a claim, excuse me, this is back in 2011, same kind of, something simple, I just pulled up. So services were rendered in July of 2011 and paid in 2011, $105,000. And in August of 2011, they paid another $168,000 for claims that happened in July of 2011. Then 13 and 6 and 3, then got a little refund after that. In other words, just because you have, you have a claim in one month, doesn't mean you're done, self funding. You still have what we call terminal liability, those runoff claims, if you will. And on average, and this is pretty consistent across the board in which I work, services rendered and paid in that first month, 40% is paid, services rendered and paid. It's pretty good. Second month, almost 90% of that is paid. So when we talk about reserve funds and terminal liabilities, you know, well, you have to add all those months up, but after the second or third month, the dollars are really small. Now, I've seen some weird ones come in after the fact, six, seven months after the fact. Usually nothing over a year, anything over a year I challenge, because a provider, Blue Cross or somebody messed something up. I make them go back to the stop loss if I can get it. But this way, you can kind of see, when you make changes, it's just not, okay, we're going to go A to AB. Well, we still have some responsibilities from where we were. Doesn't mean we can't address them, you just need to be aware of them. Employee contributions, this is just a FYI slide, the key for 2020 under the Affordable Care Act, under affordability rules, the employee cannot spend over 9.78% of their income for their health insurance. And so when the city has contribution discussions about, we want our employees to pay $200 a month for this, you have to kind of work it backwards. With our lowest paid employee, eligible employee, times 30 hours a week, times 9.78%, what does that safe harbor amount? If it's, if they have to pay, if over that, you as an entity can be fined by the federal government. So this is something Natalie and I watch out for every year. This is in great shape on that. It's actually down a little bit for 2019, it's actually 9.86%. So they're actually stretching it down a little bit, the affordability provisions. Rule of thumb is if the employee pays over 100 and, I'm going to get it wrong, but about $100 a month, rule of thumb, for their single, lowest cost single plan, you just need to double check and make sure you're not going to be in violation of any affordability rules. How many tiers? This is a fun one. We have some employee, employee spouse, employee child, employee children, so that's one or more children, then family. A lot of people look at five tiers, that makes it kind of cumbersome, but it makes it pretty handy for the employee to decide where, you know, based on what the city contributes for. But I'm going to tell you right now, at the end of the year, this city still needs $6 million to pay your claims. I don't care how I get it. Okay? So you can make seven tiers if you want, but I still need $6 million to pay my clients. So sometimes it really helps in helping attract talent and maintain the employee base. Now that I've talked about this, but it's just an FYI for yous. Let's do the folder. We actually have.
Yeah, recently modified that.
Yeah, a couple of years ago when we added tiers. We actually just add the plus one, we don't carve it out.
Spouse versus child.
Child versus spouse, we just split it in metal and call it plus one.
Yeah, some people will do, this is a ballpark, employee rate, whatever it's set at. Employee and spouse rate is usually two times, because generally, they're close to the same age and it always been generally. Employee and child is going to be about 1.75 times the single rate. Children's is going to be a little bit, family's about three and a half to four times single rate. We try to keep it around three and a half. So just, that's just a kind of a bar on where you want to try and see rates if you can get it that way. We have some higher universities, higher ed folks that like to modify based on employee pay. We actually also have a hospital that does this. They set tiers, tier one, two, and three, which is not the same as the tiers before, but it's payroll tier. So if you, if you get paid less than, I'm going to throw a number out, $40,000 a year, you pay, you know, 5% of the single rate. If you make between 40 and 60,000, you pay 8% of the single rate. If you make over that, you make 10% of the single rate. That would help those and lower pay to help make you afford this plan a little bit easier. Pretty common in high education, don't see a lot in public entities, but just wanted to let you know it's out there.
And we do do that or we don't?
We do not.
We do not.
We do not.
And the highest tiers still has to have safe harbor?
Yes, they do. But it's only on the employee rate.
Right.
High deductible, qualified high deductible plans, you don't have that right now. Just, this was the Kaiser Family Foundation, I don't know why they haven't updated this, but it's 2013's last one I could pull up real quickly. The 20% of covered workers have a qualified high deductible plan. I personally have one, I like it. Some people are very nervous about it and here's how it works. You can forget deductibles, you can forget co, well, if you have deductibles, there's no co-insurance, there's usually no copays, none of that stuff. What it is, is that you pay 100% of all your healthcare up to a certain dollar. And it's usually $2,800 for a single, $5,600 for a family. And then the plan pays 100%. But I also get to create a health savings account in my name, which is my account, my money, and my bank. So I can build essentially a health IRA for my retirement years. That's why I like to save. So, but for younger families, scares them to death, because what's the biggest question? How much does it cost? How much does a physician cost? You can't answer. But my point is, is that some of that information is not as transparent as we would like it for it to be. And we have seen over the years, and I actually had this happen to me, and I had money in my health savings account, the question was, do I go to the ER, do I wait till tomorrow and visit with my physician? I should never have to answer that question. That was a stupid question for me to ask. So I went to ER. That was, you know, 3,500 bucks. I'm fine, out. But be that's me, it was a peace of mind to me to do that. But be that's me, it was a peace of mind to me to do that. I should have never had to ask the question. So that's the challenges with qualified. And oh, by the way, it puts hospitals in the, in the collection capacity, they just love that. So, um, good news badges of high deductible health plans. Just as, I actually went to a seminar last week. You know, essentially, when you look at the, the trend charts of a, let's say, a five hundred dollar deductible plan, or a thousand is more common today, and a high deductible plan, which is a twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible, you see the premium difference is right here. But historically, the trend is the same. So really, the only difference is deductible. The hope of this was the trend would level out, and it hasn't been that way at all. So it's, it's been a pretty interesting discussion as to, as they've been good or not. Uh, this is just information from the Kaiser Family Foundation, I pulled up for twenty-eighteen. The average cost of coverage, seventy-one fifty for a single, twenty thousand dollars for a family. Employees pay usually eighteen percent of the single rate, and you're gonna say, wait a minute, what about that nine point seven eight percent rule? Well, that's of the single rate, the nine point seven eight is of their pay. Not of the premium, it's of their pay. Average deductibles, fifteen hundred and seventy-three bucks. Anything about the city's plan, you've got a share pay plan, which functions a little bit like a high deductible, but at least you're not paying all of it. You still have to ask the question, how much does it cost? Should I take a different drug, should I not? Because part of that's on me. That's a good, that's, that's, that's a good consumer discussion. But at least they've got an immediate benefit as well. I really like the share pay concept that you've got. Highly defined contributions, uh, you may remember that several years ago, this was the buzzword. Employee, all the, the employer has to do is say, I'm gonna give everybody five hundred bucks, go knock yourself out, here's my plans, pick and choose the one you want, I don't care. Because it doesn't matter to me as the employer, which to take, it's five hundred bucks. You want it in cash, take it in cash, I don't care. Well, if you look at the very bottom here, the opinion, my opinion, the key success was in national programs. Law grains, UPA, United States Postal Service, Arby's, Bob Evans, Domino's, Darden, which is the restaurant group, they adopted that. Why'd they adopt that? Terminal. In and out, in and out, just, here it is, which one do you want, leave me alone. Hasn't been very, um, effective anywhere else that I have seen. But essentially, the point, fix the pan, plan, or replace the flat contribution, it's really budget focused. But it hasn't been very HR friendly, from what we've seen, and they're rarely talked about anymore. Wellness activities, um, biometric screenings, the health risk assessment programs. How much do you encourage participation? Usually it's a dollar amount. Uh, it's a dollar amount that you have to pay more if you don't participate, or you don't get your finger pricked, or you don't do health risk assessment or whatever. Uh, I know my wife works, I was, was on her plan for years until a couple of years ago, and I had to participate too in order to get the premium discount, otherwise I would have to pay through her check. So it was, if the spouses participated, I had to qualify as well. Okay? To me, it's a snapshot in time, it is not, doesn't take place as senior physician. The bottom comment is pretty interesting. We've had a lot of employers suspended because the EEOC's getting ready to rule on that, regarding the ADA. I think it will be fine, but there are some provisions in there, especially regarding outcomes based. You have to meet certain cholesterol requirements or whatever in order to get it. I think that's gone down the metal a little bit too much, and I think the EEOC's gonna step in and say, yeah, I can do that. But I think they will continue to allow, if you wanna do biometric screenings, health risk assessments. We had one school district last year says, you know, we're not doing that anymore. However, to get your premium differential, you've gotta see your primary care physician. I don't want any of the results, I, here's the form, says I attended and sign, that's it. It's a yes or no, it's a checkbox. Very good encouragement, I kinda like that one. But wellness activities are gonna be interesting going forward. Uh, community based plans, this is kind of the, the, a lot of discussion points we're starting to see. I work out in western Kansas a lot too. And, you know, the challenge has been, is, you know, how about the city and the county and the school and the community college and the hospital, all hold hands and sing kumbaya. And, you know, I was here probably six, seven years ago, I might be updating myself, and I had a discussion with the city and the county about joining and developing a trust together. Like everything, it was like, well, are we saving any money? No, you're just kinda making your group bigger, you know, and it kinda takes a decision making away from you and from them. So it was a good discussion to have. Hospitals, I think, are gonna like it in certain areas, because that way they can steer more of their folk there. Well, of course, my response is, well, how much leakage are they really having? And does the hospital provide all the services that are needed for that community already? We had one out in central Missouri that, they were trying to get going and never did get going, but the hospital really wanted to play ball, because they thought, if I can get more utilization here, I can get a, I can get a cat lab. I can get cardiologists on staff. That's how they were taking it, I thought it was pretty brilliant. But they were too close to Kansas City, so we'll just send them to St. Louis. And so it just, it didn't quite go like we wanted that discussion to go, but, you know, like everything else, we need, we talk about provider discounts and steerage. Who's giving up what? Is the hospital gonna have to give up five percent more discounts to get you to come here? Because you're gonna probably have to modify your plan, say, hey, if you go to this hospital or this physician, we'll waive your copay. Cool. Somebody's still gonna pay for that service. So I think it can be, have some good discussions to have. Uh, we're starting to see some reference based pricing models show up. Forget the provider network, we'll negotiate all those discounts for you. You know, they'll say, well, we're gonna pay all the physicians Medicare plus a hundred eighty, times a hundred eighty percent. I don't know if that's good or not. You know, it might be great, but will the provider accept it? And if the provider doesn't accept it, can they bill my employee for the difference? Yes, because there's no contract. So there's just some things you need to talk about, they have some good, uh, reference points. Uh, we have a deal in, um, in Oklahoma City, they have outpatient surgery now. They have a schedule of what they do, and there's the price for it. And oh, by the way, you better bring a check with you. They're not, they're not gonna file insurance for you. You can file it, but they're not. Kinda like direct, primary care physicians, which is really hot in Lawrence right now. Everything goes there, they don't file plans, you pay fifty bucks per employee per month, or, and they'll take care of you, no matter how many beds that you have. Kinda like an HMO of old, is it not? Yeah, and they can have some great outcomes, I think, I really do, because people engaged. So it's, it's, it's just an interesting dynamic that we're in today, and where it lands, we don't really know. You know, when you look at some of these, I said probably need to use a TPA, which is a third party administrator. And what that is, there's one great band called BMI, there's another one out there called Freedom as well. And often ladies work their, start their own. Uh, some in, one in Joplin, one in Springfield, Missouri, some up north. Maritains in Kansas City, Maritains has to be owned by Edna. UMR, which has, you know, by United Healthcare. I mean, they're, there's some interesting dilemmas that are going on in our, in our industry. But you need to have somebody that understands those provider discounts, understands how to pay claims, and your, your employees are comfortable with using them as, as a source when they go see a physician. Again, we talked about steerage to the local hospitals already, and what their leakage is to other medical facilities. Just as an FYI, I was down in southeast Kansas working with a hospital, client today still. And we brought a lot of the large employers in town to a meeting with a hospital administrator. And I was able to get some data from the, from the large employers on a confidential basis. Because I'm going, well, hospital, do you, do you give them a cash discount if they, you know, if they come here? I mean, I don't know. Well, they were getting almost seventy-five percent of all the care already. So I, you know, just knock five percent off because you're already getting them, why would you do that? So, you know, just an interesting discussion to have about that concentric model, the community based plan. And so we're having those discussions still, but to me, I think a lot of the hospital issues are that we're starting to see in not only in ER, but off hours clinic support. If you can find local clinics that'll have extended hours or weekend hours, that's where, where the savings is gonna be in the future, gets them out of the ER. Uh, pools, um, you need to know about this, the common associational trusts, there's actually an agreement that was, is there. I call it Hotel California, you can check in anytime you like, you can never leave, remember that song from the Eagles? Actually, you can leave, but it's, it's a challenge. Most of them do not give you any loss information. Why? Because you're holding hands as a, as a pool. We rate it, we may give you a loss ratio, which tells you how much you paid in, how much they paid out. It doesn't give you an idea, so getting out is very difficult. Because most insurers wanna know your census and your claim data. If you don't have claim data, how do you get out? Of course, when you join one, you know, the board makes the decision, the board of the trust, not the entity itself. So your eye, your decision is, do we remain or do we not? Well, we wanted, you didn't understand, you either stay or you don't, these are the rates. So a lot of entities, smaller entities especially like these, because it's a, it's a true, it's almost like full insured. They handle it all for you. And you're with a bigger group of like kind minded people. So sometimes it can really be a, a very good barometer. Groups your size, probably not. Again, terminal liability, we talked about this just a little ago, that lag report. A lot of them have those provisions. You have to give them ninety days notice, uh, if you don't leave, there's a penalty to stay. Uh, we have one, uh, that you can actually qualify for, there in Kansas as well. If you leave after the ninetieth day, anything that's not paid is your responsibility. And you're gonna go, okay, so what do my claims look like? Oh, you don't understand, I don't give you claim data. So what am I accepting? You're accepting all payments after ninety days. How much? Don't know, guess we're gonna find out. I just, it really makes me nervous to do that. And if you leave, you can't get back in for three years. They don't want public entities getting in and getting out, getting in and getting out, hitting office stuff. Going forward for you all, it's the city. You know, I've got a little timeline here in just a second, but in a summary, it's enrollment, I work everything backwards. When's the enrollment need to be done? So when is the commission need to make some decisions? Do we need to do interviews, evaluations? We need to market it, get the questions, develop the RFP, get some fact finding, establish some goals early on. Typically, a hundred and twenty days prior to renewal, is what we like to get. Historically, we get the city's information from Blue Cross of Kansas in early September. Like I said, we've gotten that already. Possible, these are just some ideas, I'm not telling you to do this or not do this, but I've seen this with other public entities. Some say, you know, management, we want you to mark this every five years, it's annual agreement. Nothing is multi-year, number one, insurance might not give you a multi-year. But number two, you don't need to give them one either. But if it goes, that's why I look at this in September, if it looks up, we need to make a decision. But, you know, some say, well, every five years, just go ahead and do a due diligence and truly market the same. Let's get a quote from annual, let's get one from, from signal, let's get, you know, what do we wanna look at? Some ask for due diligence review for trends, fundings, et cetera, every three years. I actually do this for a large group in the, in the state of Missouri. It's not really marketing. I go through and I do a little bit deeper dive into your annual reports. Uh, although our firm right now does annual reports, reviews of your claims, and I keep track of it every month. I don't do a whole lot beyond that, uh, because we charge to market and stuff like that. But, um, you know, at least I think from our point of view, as a city as we sit today, we do look at this every year to see if there's any swings and things we need to look at or worry about. But sometimes we have people say, every five years, I want you to actually bid it, fine. You're, you're the boss, so you all make those decisions. This is kind of our dog, we don't have a thug, my sister has a thug, we have a. Obstacle C, this is just FYIs. Number four, bigger is not always cheaper, we talked about that, it's more predictable. Uh, every entity has its own goals and decisions. Just because you're a city doesn't make you the same as, as Hutchison or Hayes or anybody else. Healthcare alignment, you gotta watch your funding schemes. More patient center medical homes, Centers of Excellence, Blue Cross of Kansas is doing that now, they're charging for it as well. Better outcomes is usually less money, even though the cost of care may be greater. So they're focusing more and more on that, which I think is a good thing. Obstacle two, uh, what's the main issue, folks? I think the main issue is disease. A group called Levango, National Slim and others, National Slim offices a weight loss. Levango's disease, diabetes management. Those are becoming more and more prevalent. So in other words, there's two things to talk about, there's the assumption risk transfer of the benefit plan, and then what can we do to help our employees get better? And that's the disease piece. And sometimes the carriers don't always do what they, we want them to do. So that's why the city's done TRIA on the RX side, better manage that. There's other programs out there for disease, disease management. Controls of disease, you're gonna control your costs. Of course, plan designs, we've talked about plan designs already. But again, trend data shows they're on the same projections of PPL plans. I did that backwards on purpose. So, uh, okay, now Natalie, I thought I had this in here, but I don't see it. Did I not put a timetable for you? I, I did? That one? It wasn't the one I sent the day after, then? I actually have a timetable, put together, the outlines, is what I talked about earlier. I can just, let you see that. I'm sorry, I thought that was in the last, yeah, I sent you. That kinda gives you an idea from my perspective, you know, working backwards, we talked about a minute ago, kinda gives you an idea of the timeline to do that. So if you wanted to look at something for two, one, the time to start is now.
When did you last go to market and do any kind of analysis?
It's probably been... I'm gonna get this wrong, I don't have, probably five years, because we, we looked for other alternatives. And I think it was trying to make some end roads into the hospital. But I haven't done it since.
And you're telling, under utilization be a problem when the premium starts approaching a certain percentage of annual income? Because I could see a person, if, if, there's nowhere in the world they can realistically work out thirty-five hundred a year for the family, that their option may be, well, it just won't go at all.
That's why, that's why the employee contrib, employer contribution is so critical. If you look at this city, the employer contribution is, is good, it's very good. And I don't know your school district here, but most K through twelve that we work with, the, they pay the, the single rate of the lowest cost plan, and the employee pays the entire difference as their family. And that can get quite expensive. Counties are similar, you, you pay a larger bulk of single and, and some of the family rate. And so it encourages that participation. I, I want more members in there, because again, it, it makes it more predictable for me. If I see a bunch of single only and no families, I get, I mean, at number one, it tells me how the contributions work. But it, it makes me worry about who gets in and who gets out of open enrollment. Because then they'll stay out, then they'll get back in an open enrollment, then something bad's gonna happen, or they think something's going on. So you can be adversely selective against yourself if you don't encourage people to stay on the plane.
What, is there a dollar amount? What's the dollar amount that triggers involvement in wellness activities?
Fifty dollars a month. That's the rule of thumb. So, um...
And the reason I ask, I should be embarrassed to say this, but, uh, this, I, I, yeah, we have it at the hospital, but I was what you'd call probably slacking the participant. This year, I just switched to my wife insurance, completely made it up, but I wanted to do these wellness things again. But, uh, it's a lot of work plus, I guess that setup department says, well, I don't want all this information about me residing with my employer, and that they couldn't just go open up my express. I don't wanna look at it, but, but...
Well, that's a good observation. That's why usually it's third parties that do the wellness screenings and not the carrier or the employer. So in other words, the, the employer just gets global data. We had four hundred people attend, we had twelve people that, you know, had high diabetes numbers, we had this obesity number. So it's, it's a global number, but that individual data, there... But that individual data never comes back to the city or any public or any entity for that fact. Number one, if they did, it would be a violation of HIPAA. And I'm not going to jail for that. So that's number one. But yeah, that is, that's a common concern. And the insurance carrier can't get that information either. Because they can't discriminate on who's accepted or not anyway. So it serves them no purpose. And oh, by the way, the insurers already got your claim data. So, you know, but even then, they can't... The only time that becomes a concern for me is not for the employees, for the employer. When we talked about specific stop loss. When you carve that out to a carrier for, I'm going to pick on Sun Life, I'm not meaning to pick on them. Again, they don't really do this. But a lot of carriers will say, okay, Charles, you've got a heart disease. You've had this, you've had this, you've got precancer here. Instead of $150,000, we're going to laser you at $250,000 for the city. So the city's going to be responsible for the first $250,000. My responsibility, well, you've had me all this time and now I'm having a bad, doesn't matter, new contract period. And Blue Cross doesn't do that. They pool it. So again, it gets back to sometimes large claims can have an impact on self-funding, depending on how you carve that out. But yeah, individual information on large claims, they'll ask for notes regarding that. For the underwriter, which they can under business associate agreement because it impacts the pricing of the model. So yeah, that information can be found. But usually it's all encrypted. I don't get names. I never get a name.
I've seen the pharmacy program work, sort of, with ones that come into the office. A lot of the suggestions are good. Sometimes the telecomputer probably generated the question and...
Probably.
It didn't quite understand why I was using the medication. I would say those probably are worth their cost.
I think they are. To me, it's about understanding and make sure we're on the same page.
Do the wellness, is the data just prove that the wellness programs?
That data's proved that ROI is, I think, three to one on that program with the city does. It's quite good. Now, of course, you've got to, and I don't, I don't look at ROI as being absenteeism or presenteeism or any of that other stuff. I look at pure dollars. Based on this, they were available, they were able to not get into this category, which based on your claims is $3,000 an episode. So we're able to, because of this, we've saved this. So it is specific to the city.
It's good.
Yeah. It's not some global number out there. Yeah, that one's worked out well. It did some work on the city and it's some work on the employee's part. But yeah, they will have that discussion with their physician, which is what we want. Okay, that was a lot to cram in real quick.
I feel like I should put in for CME credit.
I'm going to cut off questions prematurely.
So what's the next step? I mean, I guess you need some direction. We prefer to go out for bid and then like, what about the due diligence review that you mentioned? Doing that every three years?
I actually, I looked at that almost every year anyway.
Okay, okay. That's something that you do in proper, okay, all right.
Yeah, now if you want a formal due diligence where I get in and get claim data that's really detailed. And sometimes I'll have to pay, the city's going to have to pay to get data sent to a firm to analyze that. And you know, it's $10,000 to do that. So again, what's my benefit of that? I think Blue Cross gives me enough information to see where we're going, what we're looking at. There's a few things I still want to know this year from Blue Cross. I tell you right now, I think the fixed cost they provided is very good. I have no problem with it whatsoever for 1-1 of, or 2-1 of 2020. I'm perfectly happy with it personally. I think I want to look at, the pharmacy's doing well. I want to look at their contracts a little bit deeper this next year, actually before the renewal. And I can do that this month. It's nothing that takes your time. We maybe want to talk about where the rebates are more specifically. We want to talk about which formulary we're going to look at regarding use of drugs. That really isn't an impact on the commissioners here. But I think it's part of my job to, are we getting the right program for your employees and the city? Make sure we're controlling our cost.
Do we automatically renew with Blue Cross if we don't?
Yeah, in all honesty, what I wanted to avoid is to come to you with, we need your authorization to renew and you really don't have another option but to renew or it would be out of coverage. So we're trying to identify that date and that time in this timeline to at least body that option. But now or very shortly thereafter would be the time to decide whether we're going to go to market or whether we're going to prep and negotiate for renewal with Blue Cross machine.
And there's nothing on the horizon that's going to juggle.
Not that I've seen right now. If the hospital comes up with a creative idea, I'd like to hear about it. But as I sit here today, I haven't seen anything that says, this is where you really have to go right now as a city. I'm not seeing that.
Do companies like Blue Cross tend to come back with a better offer when they know they're competing? Or figure, well, it's a level playing field of all of this, let's see if we can't fill everybody's boat up?
And customers along that?
That's a good question. We work with Blue Cross, let me put it this way, Blue Cross tolerates men. I don't get commissions. I don't care if you stay with them or not. So, you know, my issue is, are you providing the best for my client? And I work with a lot of other different reps across the state. So I see other public entities as well as the city of Salina. So I have an idea of what to expect from them. Their actuaries insulted me more than once and I'm perfectly fine with that. So, but we're usually pretty close at the end of the day. The question is, are they providing the services that the city needs or not and your employees do or not? And to me, that's probably the biggest question. And then they've had some changes regarding their patient-centered medical home programs. That was kind of a, added cost to the city. Well, I want to see those results. Well, they're just implemented, so I haven't seen results yet. But you know, if we get these in September, I like the idea of getting the numbers in September, early September. And that way, we can have this discussion every year. This looks, I think, well, let's find out what else is out there. I like that approach personally. But every five, I don't care, you're the boss. But that's usually not within my normal scope of duties for the city. There's usually a separate cost for me to do that.
So basically, you're comfortable with our fixed costs? In fact, part of it came down, if we go back to that one screen. As far as what's best for the employee, the negotiated rates with Blue Cross Blue Shield are usually, you know, fairly advantageous, I would say, for the employee. Are any of the other companies that you represent or that you would have, do they come close to that or?
They'll all be fairly close.
They'll all be fairly close on the negotiated rates.
We're finding, the last I did a deep dig down, and I could be off today, but the other provider discounts are fairly comparable to Blue Cross of Kansas. I don't see any that are less than. Doesn't mean they can't meet it. I think if you did more direct contracting or maybe some of the reference-based pricing models, you might be able to beat their pricing. But then you're going to have disruption on the other end with your employees. So to me, it's almost a teeter totter balance effect at that point.
I guess this would be a question for Natalie. How do you feel, or employees feel about their current healthcare coverage?
You know, I don't hear from a lot of them. Jennifer probably hears more than I do. But when individuals have been in that circumstance to need it, that's when they are definitely recognizing the value and the benefit. So I guess it's a good thing that they can take it for granted that it's there to cover them. But I mean, in terms of claims not being covered or having major issues, we don't have a lot of that at all. It's, you know, in terms of Jennifer, if she has anything to add, because she handles, she's our benefits coordinator. But rarely does it get to meet because it is something that's easily resolved.
I would agree with that. Their use of things being taken care of with very little hassle. And then the few things we run across are resolved quickly, normally. So yeah.
We probably haven't had the situation here for a while since we've been with the same Blue Cross. In a self-insured model, if the insurer changes, are there rules for preventing prior condition exclusions?
There will be no pre-existing issues on a takeover, no. Now, doesn't mean a new carrier would not drop a laser somebody on their stop loss. That will impact the city funding. That's all I can, I mean, I don't know. We'd have to provide, we have to provide a census data, which will apply. We'd say we can get average age and stuff like that. We'll provide the monthly enrollment and monthly claim payments by pharmacy, et cetera, medical, et cetera. And then we provide any large claims, usually over half the amount of your stop loss. So anybody that's $75,000 or above, they usually want to see more data on those individuals. And then that will determine how they quote or if they quote. They're not required to quote, to my knowledge, or not.
You kind of touched on the coverage in the lag period, but just organizationally, how much disruption would there be with transitioning from this model to another provider?
Not horrible. I think the biggest deal is to make sure we have the top 30 physicians and top 25 or whatever inpatient outpatient facilities are part of the in-network provider plan. That way, disrupt the employees the least. The only disruption that we typically will find is if somebody's getting care now and has to change that provider care in the middle of their, their illness. There can be some pain regarding that. Because if the physician's not part of that program, the network, they will be considered non-network going forward. And so that will be a financial impact on the individual. And I may not know who that is. Because it may be a $20,000 claim going on that I have, it doesn't show up on my report. I have no idea. So it can have some disruption in that piece of it. And then the city's internally is just going to ask some terminal clients to pay with Blue Cross and then just start a new accounting balance with the new carrier or CPA going forward. So it can be done. Education's going to be key. They'll need to do enrollment meetings because they just won't take blankets. They'll have to do actual enrollment meetings with everybody. Make sure they select what they need, get all that data correct and enter into the system. That way, the enrollment takes the most amount of time, make sure it's done right. They get their plan book, if they get their ID card before the renewal, that's the most important.
So is it possible to find or estimate how many employees, physicians would become out-of-network providers for any of, say, three possible plans?
Well, I could probably, I could do that. I could do that for if you would like. I could pull up...
If we decided to.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, when we put the information together, we always provide the top 25 or 50 providers, as well as the top 25 or 50 drugs, to make sure that they're within their formulary and that they're within their provider network. That way, it's very clear. And we usually have the enrolled, the member count. I mean, employees have been impacted, have gone to a physician or hospital. That way, you may say, well, this physician's not part of it. Yeah, but only one person went there. Okay, I just need to know that. Of course, it's probably going to be your wife. But you know, it's always the mayor.
So this may not be a fair question, but knowing what you know about the market, knowing what you know about our renewal, likelihood of significant savings or significant benefit under a different plan? And if I say significant perceived improvement from this plan to...
I think Blue Cross of Kansas is starting to wake up. I think they're starting to show better care and case management than they ever have before. That, I think, has been one of their downsides, where I think other carriers have probably been a little bit more impactful. But when a carrier's a little bit more impactful, it also means a little bit more participation by the employee member. Because they're going to be told what to do and where to go. And sometimes they don't like that. So, you know, sometimes if, I don't want to say that there aren't. I think, you know, both Cigna and UHC, UHC's an extremely strong insurer. But they can be a little cumbersome to work with. They're good people. I have no problem with them. They're the largest insurer in the country. But you know, Blue Cross of Kansas knows Kansas and they know the Kansas physicians. They pay well and kindly. And some of the others, they, sometimes there are some billing issues that have to be resolved.
I was trying to think of the proper adjectives to use and I think you did a very good job.
My feeling is if it isn't broke and there's not, you can't identify significant either savings on our end or better coverage for our employees. And are you satisfied with working with Blue Cross Blue Shield? I mean, have they been responsive?
Yes.
Yeah. I miss my Blue Cross Blue Shield coverage.
I do have a concern just about the perceived disruption for the employees. I mean, if we, if pricing was bad and granted, we're looking for savings for budget purposes, but this is, we're not experiencing a bad renewal that justifies...
Yeah, if I was, if I was seeing an issue that wanted me to go out and get other bids and check out, I guess, but I'd have to see something really, really significant to make a change. Because like you say, the disruption, not only to staff, but also to the insured, I think, would be, we'd have to have something really, really significant.
And I'm repeating myself, but our employees pay attention. It'll be perceived disruption that we're going out to market, let alone if we make the change.
But I think also when you've got five, at least 500 employees, there's going to be one or two or something in there that's going to, it's going to disrupt somebody in that, in that thing. I mean, you know, it's, and you hate to be the one that throws them completely off kilter and has to go to, you know, that physician's, yeah, that physician's out of, out of network.
And there are very few physicians not in Blue Cross.
Yeah, very few. And I mean, that being said, you know, I think, like I said, Blue Cross is getting better. They're probably not as innovative as some of the other carriers. But again, is she going to innovate?
Right, and the reason I ask, I've gone through with companies that are not named Blue Cross, chains of insurers three times. And every year, or that every next year, oh, well, you had that condition before. Yes, but that is, it's already, it's no longer a pre-existing condition. And it would take three to four months. Well, I don't know why, this should have just gone through automatically. You're a company. I mean, make it go through automatically. But eventually it got resolved. But it's made me very fearful of January 1 of that new year.
Well, you know, what's interesting, and I think Natalie keeps her ear on it because I send her stuff here every now and then and she's more, she's a very active insurer, the HR society. But you know, this is a moving target. And, you know, we keep our ear to the stone and says, you know, what's going on out here? And if somebody's making a play or if there's a new innovative idea or UHC has your top large employers now, we'd probably need to at least talk to them mid-year. Excuse me, and just, why did they pick you? What's going on that makes them... I'd really have that discussion mid-year before we even think about coming to you and says, you know what? We probably need to market this, this year. I'd rather have that information before I come up here to say that. But I think this next year's going to be an interesting year for us to see what's going on in this landscape.
I just don't want that reserve fund to get too low because all you need is one bad West Nile outbreak or disease. Right, because then you have 26 people with $150,000 each, it costs you a lot of money.
And our benefit dates, they start on February 1? And I mean, I guess I was just curious as to why they don't start on January 1? Is that just the way it's always been done?
From what I can tell, at least...
I'm seeing smiles, yeah. I'm seeing smiles, yeah.
50 to 20 years. And I don't know if it was just something to give the providers a break because so many companies are at a one-one renewal, but I really didn't tell you the rationale. That's just speculation.
Well, and my wife's Blue Cross is in March, but it's great for physicians. I mean, as, in, from the business side, because otherwise January is the month you make no money because everybody's deductible. It's nice to have some folks who don't start that new year until March or anything.
No, seriously, that's, yeah, that's a great thing.
Is it not? Is our benefit year a calendar year as well or a...
Number two one.
Okay, two one. I knew our contract's two one, but is our benefit year two one to two one? Never mind, I stand corrected.
Well, the last thing I wanted to do is come to you with our renewal and now's the time and when you say, well, let's go market, we have to tell you what you like. So wanting to have this conversation preliminarily, I agree, based on the renewal rates and the satisfaction. I would tell you, you know, we try to put out a benefit statement to let our employees get a full understanding of what we provide them with for their retirement and health insurance. I get more feedback from people outside of our organization, like Ray Blen, who we have, than, than I do inside the organization until something comes up and someone has reasons to really take advantage of it.
It's 3:45 and...
We'll be diligent going forward those minutes as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we've all learned some new regulations to beg for...
Oh, boy.
It is 3:45. I guess public and employees can feel free to bring something up if they wish. Open, open door.
I will, I guess. Yeah, I mean, since Charles is here, it's nice to see what's out there. Are there other organizations that have wealth, health and wellness type incentives for employees that are possible for a city like ours? I just worked with them a park and they did have them back then and I love them, but we have not had those here and for, for good reason, but to know if that's a possibility for us or not.
Are the ones in Salina?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The hospital has a huge program.
They do? Okay. But, and we just decided to know if they, if that's possible for our city or not. You know, they have tobacco cessation programs and if you went and got your blood drawn and, you know, you were, saw your provider once a year or, those were, they made sense to me. So I mean, whether you want to do them or not was your choice, but they made sense that yeah, if you did that, you got a break and it was very nice. So I don't know if that's possible for us.
We brainstormed some of that. Natalie, you might speak to what we've done and what we've seen in terms of participation in the health and wellness fair.
Okay, yeah, I'll back it up. I'm trying to think, the last time we brought an onsite fair was probably maybe at least seven years ago and...
Oh, my gosh, really?
Yeah. We did it for two to three years. We brought that onsite and we provided incentives both for the employee as well as the spouse, spouse recovered. We offered gift cards, chamber bucks, just for coming and completing it, and we struggled with participation. We were in the 20% range. And our concern was we were putting a big investment into providing the time for all of the, the common care providers to be here to do the fair. And we did it multiple days and we just weren't getting enough data back to make informed decisions on what our incentives should be or what we should be focusing on going forward. After that, we tried a number of different activities, kind of a full menu individuals could select from and log in and note what they did to achieve their points on a quarterly basis and we provided, Jennifer helping out. Were those chamber bucks or were those discounted premiums or we tried both?
We did the rebate and premium quarterly.
Decent participation there. Not really a way to gauge if it was effective. We struggled with individuals logging in there and miraculously, first day of the month, they'd done all their activities for all 30, 31 days. Anything to add on that?
No, but...
Okay. And then really our shift after that was more along with Tria, just the investment there, kind of a different type of wellness. We've, we've offered some different incentives, but not a comprehensive program or rebate premiums or other large incentives since that time. We've had different type of lunch and learns, educational providers come in addressing sleep, stress, diet, trying to think of some of the other topics.
Patrician exercise.
Yeah. We've looked at doing more of that. Actually have a couple of individuals that want to come in and talk to me about potential opportunities. And then I did talk, what was the SLIM program? Natural Slim? We've taken a look at that and we have, this is probably in the last 30 days that I've seen a small presentation on that. Really more of the coaching and support for individuals seeking weight loss or health improvement from that facet and we could incentivize that. So there are some opportunities, but we really haven't, I guess our biggest return has been on the Tria program, a different area of wellness where we have data and we can see where we're making an impact.
Didn't, didn't you mention something about even being able to make a, a simple incentive like a primary care provider yearly checkup and providing a certain discount on that? I mean, I'm just wondering if maybe rather than, you know, trying to bite off like a huge new program implementation, that maybe there are, you know, one or two small steps that we could at least start out with that and see how, how people respond. You know, if you can bring us this form signed by your physician's office, then that'll get you in, in, you know, so many dollars off either one time on a premium or this month, or this much with every, every premium to just kind of start incentivizing people to start thinking proactively as opposed to reactively.
Premium reduction is a very effective character thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I felt to mention one that we have going on right now that we started probably about 60 days ago and it's offered through Blue Cross, so there's very low administration, but either weight loss or stress management, it's counseling and coaching that's offered via telephone, completely optional. We don't have any information other than if someone gets a certificate that says they've completed it, they bring it in and we provide some chamber certificates. So that's starting to pick up a little bit.
I've had more in the last month that finished it, that they've just about had enough time to do all their sessions.
But we could definitely take a look at incentivizing primary care. We have one that a lot of our employees don't have a primary care physician.
Right. And, and I think you spoke to it too, just, you know, a, a premium reduction, no matter, you know, how incremental, I think that kind of speaks, I mean, that, that's what motivates Boo and me to participate with the hospital as opposed to, you know, getting chamber bucks. I mean, I'm, I, I don't know what, and I may be an outlier, but that just...
That's cash in your pocket. You can spend it anywhere you want, every two weeks.
Yeah.
Our annual plan, that's free, right? We have a, an annual, we have an, our plan gives us one annual checkup, the way I understand it.
Correct.
Yes, but that is, it doesn't even cost me.
Right.
We're just trying to get them to...
Get people to use it.
Yeah, I thought that's, that's one of the nice things. I don't even have to pay a copay or a 50%.
Right.
I at least do that.
Well...
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Well, if you're in town, go out and see the International Hair and Bicep.
Okay, I'll be here again on Friday, so...
It's amazing what you can do in a thousand liter square box.
I'm very familiar with it.